We don't, when it after it stops.
There's no audio coming from the town meeting side?
Seventy-two hour ceasefire. This is what our tubers look like.
So we can't really hear Dr. Thompson at all? Yeah, we're just starting to hear you now.
All right. Yeah, we're just starting to hear you now. Okay, good. So some people will enjoy that vacation, other people, uh, so why don't I go back a little bit?
The United Nations has been evacuating aid workers to give the shuttle of foreign nationals, including Americans, a journey of more than 500 miles to the port of Sudan.
We have deployed U.S. intelligence surveillance and reconnaissance assets to support land evacuation routes.
But there are still thousands of Louis Sullivan's trapped in Sudan, like Mohammed Ahmed. His wife J.C. says he was there for his father's funeral.
You know, he, he doesn't show it if he wants to.
I don't want to have to speak too much, Monica. Thanks. We have, we can see it. All right. So let me go back. All right, there we go. All right. So this is a 54,824,886 million dollar budget. And again, looking at this, the increase total for the base budget is 3.83%, 2,23,853,000. Go to the 3.5 would actually be 1.8 million dollars, but there's about 175,817 that we just could not fit under that 3.5%. The two numbers in yellow refer to our Chapter 70 state increase, which is 3.65 million dollar increase over last year. That's a significant increase. And we're looking at kind of asking for about 55.7% of that to cover this base budget. So looking at the budget. So when you look at the budget, district leadership and administration is about 2.82%. Instructional services, 81.35%. That's the majority of where all the money coming to the schools is going towards. It's going into the classroom and into instruction. And you can see the other pieces there, benefits and fixed charges. Those are things such as retirement and sick leave buyback from retirements and things along that line. That's only 1.2%. Community services, these are surveys and things that we do with the community. That's 0.02%. And progress of other school districts, most of that is our out of district costs to send students who need intensive special education needs, and that's 6.11%. So the total again for the increase in the base budget is 3.8%. So again, you can see this as a pie chart, and you can see that the majority once again is instructional services, direct instruction to our students. One thing, one thing I'll point out here, operations and maintenance. Is the, oh, here we go. Operation and maintenance, because the facilities is now shared, that number has dropped a lot. That's why it's so small. If we look at it from a payroll perspective, 86% goes towards paying the people who work in the schools, and only 14% is for supplies, paper and phones, things along that line. You can kind of see where from this, any sort of cut in the budget is probably going to affect the people that are working in the schools. One of our challenges this year is that when we looked at just our contractual obligations, and we did negotiate three-year contracts at around 2% with all of our unions. We're going to consist of about 3.3% out of 3.5 that we are looking at as a general flat increase. When we look at how these are broken out by, by category, you can again see that instructional services is 89%. District leadership, I know that that kind of is a thing. People talk about how many people are in central office. You'll look at it carefully. A lot of people in central office carry multiple roles, but that's only 3% out of the entire, the entire budget. Again, the operation of plant is lower because we have a shared facilities, but other school services, and that's therapeutic services, counseling services, about 7%. So again, by category, general education makes 64% of our budget. Special education is 32% of our budget. English language learners is up to 4%, and that is a number that has been gradually growing. If we look at it by payroll, 67%, one of two-thirds of our payroll goes towards general education, 29% towards special education, and 4% towards our English language learners. Okay, so budget, budget challenges. One of the big challenges that we are having this year is our increase in special education transportation and out of district. This is not unusual in this time post-COVID, but it is a budget driver for us. You can see right here, our transportation costs are up over, we're transporting 203 students now, and FY21 is 141. Okay, some of that is in district, but there's an increase in out of district. You see right here, we went from 60 to 79. That is a increases being seen across the state and across the country, but it definitely is driving and causing a challenge for that. The other thing that is, is causing a challenge to our budget is our change in our population. And I'll just point out right here, high needs, we're at 57.4%. And for those who don't know, high needs are students that we only count them once, but they're either special ed, English language learners, or economically disadvantaged. So if you're special education economically disadvantaged, you only count as one, but 57.4% of our students fit into at least one of those categories. Okay, and those, right, those, those children are more challenging to educate, not that it's impossible, but it definitely drives the budget. And you can see how these numbers have grown. And right here, we look at FY19, it's like kind of before COVID, and you can see the drastic change after. English language learners, low income, we're about 40%, 40%, two out of every five students in our school right now are considered low income or economically disadvantaged. Here, we're looking at our EL and special ed populations, and again, just another graph showing, showing the change and the increase. This is our English language learners. We're up to 357. That, is that, that's a February number. Thank you. We actually did FY23, as you can see, from FY22 to October. That's usually how the numbers are calculated, but this number has continued to grow. There is a chance we might be at 600 before we reach the end of the school year.
Yeah, I was just wondering, going back to that 57% or that, the numbers there, how do these numbers compare to surrounding towns?
We are, we are higher. That, that, those that are around us. I don't know exactly what the high needs is, but it's definitely higher than Westwood, and definitely higher than Camden, and definitely higher than, than, um, than Devon. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so new staff requests, these are the staff requests that actually made it into the budget. We are asking for 10 positions. We did have to add 10 positions throughout the courses here, and that was because we had students with increased needs, special ed or EL staffing, and those are mandated by law that had to be met. But we are asking in this budget for 10 additional positions. Three are special ed teachers. You saw the numbers increasing. That's part of it. We need to meet their IEPs. That's a legal requirement. Adjustment counselor at the Callahan, that again is a special ed position, and that again is mandated. We have kids who are on IEPs that have counseling pieces in their IEPs. English language learners, split between the Volsk, the Volsk, one of the Volsk, and a Cleveland Callahan split, two EL teachers, English language learner teachers, and EL coordinator. What that position was added as part of a grant, and we are gradually putting it back into the budget. We added, we started all half last year, half this year. It is a requirement with the numbers of EL students that we have now. The other, under general education, the preschool administrator, our numbers and needs in the preschool have drastically changed. We have more children with autism. We have added three classrooms over the last two and a half years to our preschool. And actually, the preschool is actually the size of our other elementary schools. Okay, elementary student support specialists, this is the result of a change in the discipline laws, and this is to help our elementary principals work with students that we are seeing some improved, some behavior issues with. Interventionists, so these were previously grant funded. The ESAR funds, which you probably have heard about, which were the COVID grants that we got. We, there's 75% of that money has all gone towards trying to improve instruction and closing gaps. One of the key pieces of that is, is people in our schools that are teachers that are running intervention groups during the school day. Okay, we've seen a lot of good growth from that. We, we hired six three years ago, and we are bringing them back in piece by piece into the budget. Nurse at the LMPA, again, the Little Mustangs preschool is kind of a special ed program. That position was previously grant funded. If we don't keep this position, we actually lose the health grant, which would cost us 777,000 over the next, we would lose that grant for the next six years. Okay, so these 10 have been whittled down from the original request of 32. Okay, now, out of those 32, 31 were actually, you can make an argument for them, that they were needed. So this request here is really kind of, it's not moving us forward, it's keeping what we have. Okay, so this is what, some of the things that were cut from the budget. Additional special ed teachers. Going to try to do it with less or as lean as we can. Special ed, that's occupational therapy and speech and language therapy. And again, trying to do what needs to be done with what we have. A BCBA, that's a board certified analyst. Okay, and we need to increase that. We're seeing more autism. We do a lot of work with kids with autism. Paraprofessionals, 6.3 were asked for. Assistant transportation director, we're going to increase that up 0.4. We're not going to do that. An adjustment counselor at the middle school in the Volsk. Mental health issues are a challenge. It would be really great to have more counselors. Whoops, wrong button. All right, this EL assistant is probably, is one of the ones that I probably wouldn't have included in that 32 needs. Okay, other ones, and these are the ones, general ed. So for the past two years, the elementary principals have asked for more health and physical education teachers to work more in grades one and two, increase their health and PE, overall wellness, and increase the health program. Again, just can't manage to fit it into the budget. Teachers, these are classroom teachers that are either to meet class sizes at the Volsk in the old hand, student requests at the middle school and the high school. So for one thing that is not in this budget is expanding our advanced placement offerings, which the kids are asking for. Again, cannot fit it into the budget. Middle school computer science teacher, this is actually, we've had a true incredible amount of success with our, with our computer science program at the middle school. We are going to bring the fifth grade. This was part of trying to gradually increase that staffing, so it isn't all of a sudden a giant jump into the deep end of the pool. Okay, so funding the budget. So the first thing we're going to talk, I'm just going to talk a little bit about revolving accounts. So we collect fees for transportation, preschool tuition, athletics, drama, music. Circuit breaker is the reimbursement from the state for out of district costs that are over and above four times foundation. That's a formula you don't want to know about. And we have in the previous, previously been able to put money into a special ed stabilization fund. So all of those pots of money are being used. You can see this is the FY23 offset, and you can see what we are putting in for FY24. Transportation is a little less. These are kind of spending down funds that we got as revenue replacement from the town in that revolving account. That is kind of not sustainable because that money is not all in there. Preschool tuition is going up a little bit. Again, more preschoolers paying tuition, more money to spend. We're actually able to put more teachers and paras paid out of that account. Athletics. This is one we're going to have to watch carefully to make sure that's sustainable. Drama music, same sort of thing here. Circuit breaker, you can see right now that that is a pretty big increase. There'll be another chart. I'll talk about that in a second. But that again is to bring down, all of these offsets bring down the base budget. But you can see that we're going. So we've in, you know, so we went from 4, 4,91,000 to 5,467,000 in offsets this year to try and get that budget down as close as possible to 3.5. Okay, so circuit breaker. So this, you're going to look at FY22. This is like the perfect scenario. Okay, because what you want to do, if you're budgeting smart, you've got enough wiggle room. If something doesn't work out right, you can have, you can have someone move in. All right, that maybe has a residential placement. Residential placement can cost $250,000 a year. So if you don't have some reserve in this, in this green line, okay, your balance right here, you end up kind of in trouble. That's kind of your safety net, if you will. So this is kind of a, the, so you get the budget from the year before. You have to spend that. You can carry over one year. Okay, so this is, and you can see how we're trending. Okay, so this is our reimbursement for next year. This might actually go up a little bit. This is how much we are, we are assigning or going to spend to help level off our budget, budget, and that's our, our reserve going over. Okay, so we're kind of a little closer to the edge, closer than we'd like to be. Another form of reimbursement is Medicaid. Last year, there was a lot of kids receiving extra services. So Medicaid reimbursement is payment that the federal government gives us for doing occupational therapy, physical therapy, these sorts of things that they might go to a doctor's office to do, but they get it in school so we can get a reimbursement. Last year, there was $578,000, almost 579,000. This year thus far is 237. Okay, we expect that to be about 300, 350. Right, 330, 350. This is only the third quarter. We have one more quarter to get. So we've made a concerted effort. If you look back in FY20, all right, and part of that healthcare grant, I noticed, I noted a few minutes ago, we're able to have a full-time nurse leader, and we have increased our effort and work to make sure we're maximizing that reimbursement. That reimbursement goes to the town towards free cash, and we're going to talk about free cash a little bit. Okay, grants. So you can see the, the grant work here. FY21 and FY22, you can see the total gets to 4.5 million and 5.9 million, and you can see a majority of that is, is ESAR COVID money that we got. But even this year, if you look back at FY20, we're at 2.9 million thus far. There's still a few more grants we are looking for. This is a way to offset the budget and really try to move the district forward. We just got a grant for bringing in a specialized math program to our kindergarten next year. But we are being very proactive to try to maximize the grant money that is out there to, to help our work. Okay, historical comparison to Chapter 78, and you can see right here, FY22, the red represents the increase, not much of an increase. But right here is when we started to see kind of a population changeover. All right, and that Chapter 70 went up 3.4 million last year to 12.8686. This year rose 3,300, 654 million, all right, to 16 million, and that is directly a result of our low income, our increased special ed, and our increased, increased EL students. Net school spending. You can see here, this is our actual net school spending. This is what's required. All right, we, for the first time in a long time, are actually decreasing our over/under. Okay, to kind of give you some comparisons to what other districts around us are, Devon, Devon is at 57.7%. 75, sorry, 75.7%. Westwood, 82.7%. A Wallpole is at 43.8%. So we're kind of on the low end in the area, but that, that is a drop kind of moving in the wrong direction.
Is that total, total from the town, or does that include all the grants and the offsets and everything else?
After that state does all their end of year reports, they do a net school spending comparison. That's the foundation, what you have to meet. You have to meet a certain foundation, and that's what you're over.
So this, this is what's required. That's how much we're over.
Right, but it's from all sources?
All sources, yeah. Okay, so part of getting this budget down is actually pushing some of our needs onto warrant articles as one-time requests. And I'm going to kind of go through those. So one of our challenges right here, special ed transportation, we've been trying for three years to buy vehicles to transport our kids. Part of, it's a what, $700,000 increase in this budget alone is because we've had to outsource. Previous to this, we, we transport all of our own kids, out, all of our own kids, whether they're in district or out of district, or almost all of them. That number has changed because we cannot get the vehicle. So we're asking for 500,000 from free cash to be able to do that. We are hoping that we will be able to finally get some of these vehicles, and we won't need all of that. But the problem is, we are still looking to get those, and even if we order them, they will not come online. You have to buy the vehicle and then fit the vehicle and then get it inspected and put it on the road, and that is a three- or four-month process, if it comes in on time. So seeing that we have to transport starting July 1 for the, for our summer programming with special ed, we are kind of asking for that upfront. The other piece that we are asking for is 350,000 out of the Medicaid revenue that came back in town. If you remember, if you go back to that other, last year, we brought in 600, yeah, over 500,000. We're asking for 350,000 of that to come back to us. Homeless transportation is another reimbursement that we get. That's a very conservative ask that we're asking for at 22,000. These are monies that go to the town. Don't come to us directly. The next one is an elementary study warrant article. We want to hire, get some help in looking at an elementary study. We're going to move the fifth grade to the middle school, and we need to be prepared to reconfigure the elementary schools for maximum efficiency, and getting a little outside help with that is important here. And then one-time request to use some of the override stabilization fund to again cover, cover some of these costs. We're just not able to get under the, the normal budget, and that is 1.487643. That does still leave some money left in the override stabilization account. I think 1.3 million, 1.2 million, roughly. Okay, so the total ask for warrant articles is 2,419.
So you said you want to move the fifth grade to the middle school?
In the fall of '25. The new middle school is going to be a five through eight middle school.
It's going to be a what?
Five to eight middle school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right, so kind of summing up here. Budget by category, and this, this actually includes all all of those monies. So this is a little bit different, and it includes not just the base budget, but the warrant articles as well. So general education makes 62%, special education 35%, English language learners still at 4%. And if we look at payroll, this is still pretty similar, 67%, 29%, and 4%. All right, and this kind of summarizes, again, this is the base budget, not the warrant articles. So what do we hope to accomplish in this budget? Meet the needs of an increasingly diverse population. Continue our attention to learning loss, and again, the investment of those ASR funds. We do have one more year of that. Social, emotional needs of students, and again, that's targeted intervention. Increased staffing assistance as a structural support with students' disabilities, E, English language learners, as well as the general ed population. If you have a good intervention program, which we have been working on now for the past three years, you have less students needing targeted intervention such as special education. It does continue the one-to-one Chromebooks. It does include technology for a laptop refresh, which is about every five or six years. They get old. They don't longer work with the current software. And if you don't keep up with that, then all of a sudden, it's a big, right? Curriculum refresh, next year, we're looking at pre-k to 12 art, k-ified multilingual program, k-ified health and wellness and PE. Continuing our professional development, diversity, equity, inclusion, technology, and functional practice. And our community service commitment to Minds Matter, which is that interface mental health referral hotline, and the Metro West Youth Behavioral Study, and we're going to continue maximizing our use of grants, applying for grants, being aggressive with that, and revolving funds. So just one, one last thing. This PowerPoint is on our website. We do have copies up here. If you get home and you have a question, just call, call my office. We'll have someone get back to you and answer that question as soon as possible, in a day or two. So with that, we're here for you.
I was wondering, when you were talking about some of the special needs, do we take in students from other towns?
We do not. At the, we have one student who is tuitioning in is more for a physical situation, and another, just in another district that does not have the ability to have them in their schools. So, of course, I joked with that superintendent that he'll never go back to their district because once he's a Mustang, he'll always be a Mustang. Yeah.
You mentioned the previous slide, the increasing diverse student population. Are you talking about the students' population is just driving all the costs, obviously?
Yep.
That's at the top and everything else. Is that just in the town of Nollas, surrounding towns? You said our budget is higher than the surrounding towns? Or did I miss hear that earlier than the?
No, our percentage of net school spending is lower than other towns. Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure. Everyone's kind of finishing up their budget. I haven't really looked to see what the total budget is.
Diverse student population, increasing diversity. Do they also come from other towns? And if they do come from other towns, is it because Norwood has a better facility, a better makeup of teachers, a better staffing, a better something for the towns that have them shifted?
Yeah, so there's been a lot of movement. A lot of it has had to do with a change in reimbursement for housing from the state. So that's part of it, but we're seeing an increase in our low income. We're seeing an increase in our English language learners and we're seeing an increase in special ed.
Again, in the surrounding areas in addition to Norwood.
I'm not sure we're seeing that in Westwood per se. Most of those folks are moving into apartments. You want, no?
I just wanted to state that with the change in population, you've also got a really hefty increase in Chapter 70, because that's what's driven.
I'm sorry, increase in money?
In the state reimbursement. So we get an extra 3.6 million.
Well, that offsets that expense with the increasing population. It helps offset that expense.
Helps, yeah.
So we are, what is it that's making Norwood particularly attractive? Is it the, we have like a lot of apartments and stuff like that or?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I don't necessarily sell real estate around here. So I'm not quite sure if that's my expertise. I don't know if you want to?
You know, during the past year, we were celebrating our 150th anniversary. And when we did that, there was a lot of things that happened at the schools. And I went to the elementary schools and we walked around and most of them had, you know, the little paragraphs written by the kids and pictures written by the kids. And I know some of them had pictures about where they came from and why did they come to Norwood? And the answers were just like the answers that I saw when I read some of Patty Fanning's books about Old Norwood. And it was, we have the systems to get people to be able to commute back and forth, bus and in train. We have schools, we have reasonably priced rents. And the one that got me, my aunt was here. My uncle was here, my family was here. So they came from different places. And someone in their family had already lived in Norwood and they came in. And to tell you the truth, it's exactly what happened to my family when we came to Norwood. So, so that's, I mean, that really is kind of the bottom line of this. You know, we've got everything. We offer lots of things. And then people have families here.
I do think the train does help. Because if you look at towns that have the train stations, I live in Franklin. And I do think that is helping because people are moving out of Boston and trying to be into towns where they can get into.
And they can still get into a job in Boston fairly easily.
Dr. Thompson, we have a question online.
Hey, Dr. Thompson. I just want a clarification on a couple of things you said. First off, I think this is Article 9 in the special that you're talking about, that you want to take the money out of free cash.
Yep.
And that is just for purchasing, correct?
Well, yeah, so 500,000 of that is to possibly have to pay for out-of-district transportation if we have to hire somebody else to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm only seeing 117 and 212 on Article 9.
That's capital? So those are, those are purchasing. That's switches. Remember the other ones?
Oh, and the mini buses. Yeah, so those are purchases, yes.
Right, so where is the funding coming in? Because that's part of the special.
Yeah, that wasn't part of my presentation. That's part of the capital, the capital presentation.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, my only concern was that about backfilling with our free cash, because I was hoping our goal was going to keep staying away from trying to backfill our budgets with free cash. So I didn't know what alternatives we'd looked at before even proposing that.
We've looked, the other is to have an 8 point, some odd, 8.38% increase, which is not sustainable. By hope, so these warrant articles are looking at what we're making the assumption are one-time costs and not costs that will continue.
Okay, so one-time cost, we could basically consider like, it's not necessarily capital, but it's a one-time expense that we have to cover.
Right, as opposed to putting it in the general budget where that's your base moving forward.
Understood, okay. The other thing I had for you is where on the school website is the presentation?
It should be under School Committee and Budget Subcommittee. Of course, I'm not looking at it right now, so you're really testing me.
That's okay, there'll be a quiz at the end too.
Exactly, exactly. I haven't even had the textbook yet though. Yes.
Thank you.
Increase was your total school budget, right? What's the increase on the town when you take away the Chapter 70? Like, Chapter 70 is increasing, so by what percent is the town's portion of the school budget?
Yes, we're only looking at using, if we're going to talk about the chapters, we're talking about using 50, what's that number? 56% of that Chapter 70 money? I just want to, if I flip back, I'm afraid I'm going to.
So we're using 55.1, 55.37% of the Chapter 78. So the rest of that money, which is 1,63963, is part of the town's pot, I said. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Not exactly, but it's good to know.
We pool all of our revenues. So you could say what percentage of Chapter 70 is the school department using on a year-by-year basis, you could look at it. But it could be zero or it could be 100%. Because again, the town has always pooled all of our revenues together. I think total Chapter 70 is, call it 15 or 16 million, the total school budget is 52 million. So do they get 100% of it? Do they get 20% of it? It's sort of how you want to look at it. You can isolate it in a year and say the school budget has gone up this much this year. And Chapter 70 has gone up this much in this given year. Other questions for Dr. Thompson? Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Switch screen. Do you want to take a moment to get our screen up?
Thank you.
You're welcome. One item I want to point out on the school budget. You probably saw on the slide there, it talked about minimum acquired school spending. The state has a formula that establishes a number that they claim is the minimum required amount that you legally have to spend on a school district. That number is not really based in reality. I have never worked in a school district where you could actually spend that amount of money. I mean, it's part of a formula that in some ways dates back to ed reform in the early 90s, but it's never been a realistic number anywhere I've seen it. Short of eliminating, call it three or four grades altogether. We'll be up with, we're going to go next to what are our shared or fixed costs. Just a minute, we're just switching platforms here. Yeah, I think it's working on there. It is. So we tend to use the word shared costs and most other organizations do probably use the term fixed cost. It includes a lot of our insurances, our debt service, includes our facilities department, which we're going to talk about as well. We'll start off with looking a little bit about our revenues, put the whole picture together. I know this is hard to see. It's page, I think, 1G in your budget book, so you do have this little type C up on the screen. Down here is the total revenue, excluding the light department that's needed to operate the town. So we're looking all in at about $150 million to operate the entire town and school. The highlight in our revenue this year, Dr. Thompson mentioned, is Chapter 78 is increasing. The brief story on that, the state got sued basically in the early 90s. I believe it was by the city of Brockton. And that led to significant education reform in the early 1990s in Massachusetts. Part of it was clarifying the superintendent's authority in the schools, the authority of principals, what the school committee's role is. We still largely operate under that early 1990s ed reform framework. But the basis of that lawsuit was that the state was not filling its contribution to cities and towns for education, particularly coming about a decade after the passing of Prop 2 and 1/2, where we're constitutionally obligated to provide a certain education in Massachusetts and we didn't have the revenue tools to address that. Interestingly enough, some of the increases in Chapter 70 that we're seeing came about as the state made a commitment to fully funding, they referred to it as the Student Opportunities Act, but making more enhancements in the 1993 formula. Because sure enough, a couple of cities in the state with some political clout started making the threat that, hey, we may have to do this again because Prop 2 and 1/2 just doesn't fundamentally work unless you're growing a lot. Once you're fully built out, that growth can be challenging. But although the costs are going up, at least the state is meeting their commitment and giving the additional revenues. We've had two very good years in a row of revenue. Sometimes they go to a manager's meeting where other managers, we talk about how they got stuck on state aid and the state didn't really give them anything. And last year, I'm just kind of inducting the conversation and folks FYM, which are usually not at those meetings, it's because I don't want them to know that we've gotten some of the bigger increase in the state, but they've come along with those costs.
So are those numbers fixed at this point?
So yes and no. Hopefully they'll continue to go up. The state has always held harmless on school aid. So what that means is your school aid, what you get for Chapter 70, will never go down. Even if you see a decrease in student population, because it is tied to the number of students, it angles into the specific needs of each individual student. And there's a formula across 15 or 17 different categories that calculates it. So we never should go down. You could turn into what's known as a minimum aid district and that's where the state guarantees you a minor increase every year. Sometimes it's $25 or $30 per student. That year, it was the year of COVID, so we had a lot of students who didn't enroll or enrolled, were homeschooled, who were a minimum aid district that year, so we only got about $95,000. Would never work for us long-term. The challenge there is as you, even if you're losing student population, and I've worked in some districts in the rural part of the state where you're losing students every year, you can't just cut staff and services accordingly. You've got 15 kids in a class and next year you've got 13 kids, and next year you've got 11, then you've got nine. You still got one teacher in that classroom. So I'm hopeful that that number will never go down. Maybe the student need population changes and it ultimately ends up working out for us in the better because we're guaranteed that. But I suspect in the next 10 years and so the state might have to look at that, hopefully not to our detriment. We have some communities in the inner ring of Boston that are really going through some incredible demographic changes that if you look at where they were 10 years ago, where they are today, where they're going to be in 10 years, communities like Everett, Revere, I mean, there's so much money falling in Somerville as they continue to gentrify. At some point in time, you could see an Everett being as wealthy as, nobody says wealthy as Cambridge, but you could see an Everett being significantly wealthier. So then you're going to say, well, wait a minute, your Chapter 70 has been built up all these years over having this very high needs and low-income population. And then if a lot of it is significantly gone, they may end up being a minimum aid district for 10 years or 15 years. And somebody may look at the formula and say, maybe it's too high for them. But then again, 10 years of us being a minimum aid would be absolutely devastating. You'd hope they have the wealth on the other side to adjust for it.
I guess what I meant was for fiscal '24, we have the final charge sheet numbers or?
So we're close. The governor releases a budget and then the House releases a budget and then the Senate releases a budget. So what we're going with are the governor's numbers. The House numbers have come in a little bit lower on total aids, down about $55,000. We would adjust that in November when we file our tax recap. We, in the context of $149 million, that $54,000 difference is not a big deal at this point. If the Senate were to come in with a number that somehow whacked us for even less, we may have to bring something on the floor at town meeting or candidly in the fall to adjust the budget. There's usually never a dramatic swing between the governor, the House, and then the Senate, and then they do a final reconciliation. It's never been 10 or 20% or something like that. Usually it actually tends to go up a little bit with each time. Everyone kind of wants to outdo each other. The governor wants to throw a good number out there and everyone's happy. And the House wants to say, well, no, no, we're going to be even better than that. And the Senate says that, but they use updated numbers each time somebody releases their own version of it. So sometimes that just causes a change in adjustment. The only other point I want to point out for share costs, and again, I know it's tough to see on the screen, but it's in your budget book. Local received, which is a lot of the money we generate locally, is up about $0.5 million, which is pretty good. We're seeing solid increases in ambulance revenues. Those will largely be sustainable. Even when the hospital comes back, those numbers will be sustainable. We've gone from an advanced ambulance and a basic ambulance to two advanced ambulances. The longer distance, you generate some revenue, charge per mile charge, but we also miss some calls as a result of the hospital being down. But ambulance revenue is going up. The border cycle has also candidly been very aggressive in raising fees and making sure we're collecting as much as we reasonably can for our ambulance service. So that's helped to bump those numbers up quite a bit. Building permits this year have gone gangbusters, but we try to be conservative in those revenue projections. Our financial policy actually calls for us to try to be at about 90% of the prior year's revenue number. Now, this year, we're probably going to be $2 or $3 million over in building permits. We've had a lot of construction, a lot of permits issued. There's a code change that occurs on July 1 that will probably increase the cost of construction with some energy efficiency requirements. So you know that the hospital wants to get their main building permanent before the end of the year. Moderna wants to get a couple more permits in before the end of the year. I think FM Global, if they can, they get it in, they're going to do it. I can certify building anyway, but if they get it in before the end of the year, there's a little bit of a cost savings to them. So that number, we may have projected 2 million for building permits. This year, it might be 5 or 6. We're not going to go to 90% of that. We know that that's not what the number is realistically going to be for the next couple of years. But all that money becomes free cash, which helps us with the capital plan and the budget next year. Projected fund balances, this is something we always look at. Now, these numbers are assuming that as the budget book and the warrant has gone forward, gets approved, that could always change. The Finance Commission still has to finalize a couple of items. I would remind everyone that a budget is a snapshot in time. And if you ask me to do the budget each day of the year, it would be different each of the 365 days of the year. So this is as presented now, could change between now and town meeting and change between now and the end of the year. Free cash down to about $843,000. The stabilization fund would be up about 8.3 million. Override stabilization down to $850,000. And then this money here is the money from the sale of Forbes Hill. Newer town meeting members may not remember, some more seasoned ones will. We purchased the property several years ago, ostensibly to keep out of housing development. Kept out of housing development, tried to sell it 43 times. It didn't work each time. And then finally, we did sell it at quite a significant profit for the town. We netted about $10 million off of that sale. We wanted to put it in stabilization and town meeting voted to do it that last year. Fortunately, the Department of Revenue picked up on that and said you're not supposed to use it until you spend it. You can only spend it on things you would otherwise borrow for. Large equipment, property purchase, land purchases. We had a meeting with the OR and said, we really don't think that's fair. We wanted to be conservative. We wanted to save the money. They said they understand the state statute was not designed for the odd Norwood situation where we bought a property and turned it around three or four years at a huge profit. It's really designed for making sure that first, if you own debt on a building and you're a town and you sell it, that you have to pay off that debt, the statute number one. Number two, it was meant to be that you're not just selling off buildings to balance your budget, which is fine. It's rare that a town nets that kind of a profit in a short period of time. But we still have that money, so the next year's capital plan might use some of that and we might be able to move some free cash into stabilization and override stabilization or any other funds to try to improve our financial picture. We haven't drawn down our regular stabilization fund in several years. It's probably statistically the highest it's ever been and that's a good thing. We want to keep that money there. That truly is a rainy day fund. Keeping money in free cash is good, but at the end of the day, when it comes to looking at our financial position and looking at our credit rating, which we got used today, we've been affirmed again at AA Pros plus, we'd love to get to that AAA, but it really comes down to fund balance and how much money the town's keeping in the bank. And there's a balance there between how much money we want to put in the bank versus we have real needs, we have services, we have to operate every year. The rating agencies don't actually care what we call the money. Stabilization, you could call it free cash. They don't really care. They just look at a total number. So in that sense, whether the free cash goes into stabilization or goes into a compensated absences fund So in that sense, um, whether the free cash goes into stabilization or goes into a compensated absences fund or goes into some other fund. If we're holding on to the money, that's always good for our financial future, our financial flexibility and our rating agency. But as you just saw with the school department presentation, we have real needs. And we have a student population that is changing. You could actually have a residential population in a town, not change very much over time. But you have a student population where ten or fifteen percent of that population changes. And that has a much more significant impact than it does on some of the general municipal services. So we're writing a solid on our budget line, some of the larger ones. Uh, next we have debt service. This is the amount of money the town has to raise each year to pay our debt. We do have debt, I know some people say, wow, I didn't think the town was in debt. It's not like that. This is money if you attended the municipal finance one on one. It's anything we borrow money for. We will almost always be borrowing money for buildings, large equipment, large public works projects. You're seeing a significant increase, the majority of that is actually where included in the budget number is the debt exclusion for the Copley Middle School. The new five B eight middle school that we're getting. So that money is excluded from the tax levy. When that bill is paid off, that debt service goes away. Now, the problem is when it's twenty years down the road, obviously the net impact on your taxes and incomes makes it not as big of a deal once it gets paid off. But once that's done, that amount will go down. And the town doesn't have access to that money again, you'd have to go back out to a ballot vote to get access to that. Regional schools, another water bar, we consider a shared or a fixed cost. This is our participation in Norfolk, Aggie and Blue Hills. Uh, not too bad of a budget buster this year. I will point out, Blue Hills is still probably up about fifty percent over five or six years. Combination of a construction project they did that we as one of those member towns have to share in. Uh, they also, as a result of that, had to increase their overall number of students they're allowed to have in. And it just happened that some of the new students in there or a bigger portion of them happen to come from Norwood. That was last year's adjustment where we were kind of screaming to the heavens because Blue Hills aren't the significant amount. This year it was over that amount every year, we could live with it. And that's our direct tuition assessment from Norfolk Aggie. Our Norfolk Aggie is actually paid through our county assessment. It's unique that it's a school effectively run by Norfolk County. As most, you know, counties in Massachusetts don't have the same uh, government responsibilities as they do in other areas. They really um, handle the registry of deeds, the prisons, couple of other services. We happen to have an Aggie school that's run by the county. That number is, it's down a little bit, it's been fairly stable between that forty and sixty thousand dollar number for quite a few years. We only have, I think, five or six kids that go to Norfolk Aggie. Retirement pension contributions, every city and town in Massachusetts is a part of the same pension uh, called program. We might have different systems, it's the same system that every state employee has. And this is our annual increase, it's for mostly general government employees, there are some school employees in the system. Uh, teachers are in a separate system where that's actually paid for by the state. So while we always like to complain that the state's not giving us enough money, I always try in the back of my mind to remember they do pay the teacher pension system. Um, which is a huge saving to cities and towns. And that's actually not uncommon in most states where the state just takes care of it. Employees in Massachusetts, if you work for a city or town, the pension system is completely transferable between any city or town or the city town in the state. This is, as I said, the same system, we have the same system here that Westwood has, that Adams Massachusetts has, that Boston has, that the governor's office has. And interestingly enough, employees in a municipality in Massachusetts do not pay into social security. If you only work in the system, you will not receive social security. There's an offset in your taxes at the end, if you're able to qualify for both. The employee contribution is about eleven percent. There's a handful of uh, old timers out there who run the five percent system. The state has been significantly increasing it, but I think the five percent went away by the mid eighties. I don't know if we really have any five percent employees left.
Seventy five.
Seventy five, so we, Bernie, God rest his soul, was a uh, a five percenter. Um, so there's very few of those uh, left. We might have one at the library, but for most employees, it's um, you contribute eleven percent of your pay into the pension system. It's a ten year minimum vesting and then you can Google the chart, shows you what you get based on your last either three or five years, depending on when you join the system. Workers' compensation, we, like any other organization, have employees who get injured and we have to pay workers' comp, whether it's direct medical bills, whether it's their time where they're out. This budget is mostly for non-public safety employees. We will sometimes use it to offset some of the public safety costs, but public safety actually don't, employees in Massachusetts, police and fire, they don't actually get workers' comp. They get a separate statutory framework for um, when they're injured on duty where they actually can get a hundred percent of their pay tax free while they're injured on duty. Um, so that cost ends up being sometimes a little bit more significant. It's usually mostly borne by the public safety budgets. Sometimes depending on the nature of the injury, workers' comp pays for certain, certain portions of it, but it really depends on what their, the nature of the injury is. Public safety employees, also there tends to be a little bit more uh, scheduling flexibility and the ability of a department head to say, okay, this particular officer was injured. We're just going to make adjustments there. In a small department of four or five people, there's really nothing you can do. If the person's out on workers' comp, you pay the workers' comp. Same thing with a teacher, if you've got three third grade teachers at the old ham and one of those out injured, the teacher's out injured, we pay the workers' comp. Again, this is town and schools. Health insurance, one of my favorite and least favorite topics, uh, we're looking at about a seven percent increase in premiums. We're a member of what's known as the GIC, the group insurance commission. That's the Commonwealth's insurance program for its employees and municipalities can opt into it. We opted in about, uh, was it fifteen years ago, was it the GIC, ten? Ten, twelve years ago. Significant savings at the time, um, we have a fairly high loss ratio. So one of the questions I sometimes get is, well, can we just put the health insurance out to bid and get a lower number? The answer is probably not, because somebody else is going to look at our loss run and say, gee, the state collected nineteen million dollars from the town in order last year and they had, you know. Eighteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in claims, uh, we're not going to do it for any cheaper, we'll add ten or twenty percent of that and then quote you. It's also subject to a statutory framework around collective bargaining, so we couldn't simply put it out to bid or make plan design changes. Being a member of the GIC has some pluses and minuses. On the one hand, it's a much bigger pool, it's other than this year, actually been fairly stable compared to some of the uh, private pools that municipalities are part of. There's a West Suburban one, there's one that covers central Mass, there's one for Berkshire County. Uh, Maya, who's our insurance provider that provides insurance specifically to municipalities, um, they're one large pool. The state's generally been better uh, than those. This year, it's a tough year, but it happens. So we get a bigger pool, we lose a little bit of control, the state sometimes makes adjustments to things like co-pays and deductibles and what plans cover. So it's a catch twenty two, we don't really get to have much of an influence in that. There is a GIC board, but those decisions are again statewide. But the benefit is every now and then the state says, hey, we've had to cut the side of a plan and, you know, the cost is going to go down. We average by covering about eighty percent for um, most of our plans. Uh, sorry, that's actually reversed. Um, the town contributes about eighty percent, employees contribute about twenty percent. Slight difference on a couple of plans, but again, that's all subject to collective bargaining. And you have to have an agreement with your, it's known as your PEC or your public employee committee. So it's actually sort of all your unions at a table, uh, plus retirees, so it's not exactly a uh, easy process. Uh, Medicare, we do pay that one and a quarter percent or one point four or five percent of Medicare, just like any other employer in the uh, in the country. Capital equipment, this is something that the uh, the town staff and the finance commission have worked hard on the last couple of years to start building in some of what we refer to as our rolling stock. We used to treat all these items as a capital item when we take them up in the fall or in May when we did capital outlay. But there was a realization that no certain rolling stock or certain vehicles are going to have to be replaced on schedule every year. We should be budgeting for them like, like the fixed cost that they are. Uh, this is the police cruiser replacement, we know we need to replace a certain number of police cruisers every year to maintain our fleet level that it's at. Same thing with DPW, this number here represents school vans. We, um, grant money is funny, it's always good to get grant money, but sometimes it creates problems. Two thousand and eight, uh, after the last recession, we got a ton of grant money, we bought a ton of vans. The problem was they all sort of started coming due uh, around one, but certainly if somebody said, would you like a million dollars for vans? We're not going to say no. So we've largely built in what we need for a fleet replacement schedule. Of course, the way the world works, we get to where we're at a great fleet replacement schedule for vans and then what happens? Two things, one, we can't get vans, so we're sitting on money trying to buy vans. And two, we see the larger than average increase in the needs of the special ed transportation population. And incidentally, this is um, special ed transportation, it's not regular school buses, that's a contracted service. One question we often get about school, uh, the special ed transportation is why don't we contract it out versus doing it in-house? And every time we run that analysis, it usually shows that we're saving money by doing it in-house for a couple of reasons. One, when we buy fuel, we don't actually pay taxes on it. We get it cheaper than somebody out there in the private sector does. And two, not having to pay for part-time, non-benefited employees, we don't have to pay into social security. So our costs are a little bit cheaper, you're only on that pension system if you're a full-time employee. So really, there's nobody out there that can dollar for dollar match what we're doing. Every couple of years, we look at it to make sure. Uh, it's also a matter of the van drivers don't get paid all that much, so it's not like we're paying fifty dollars an hour, everyone else is paying eighteen dollars an hour. All the salaries are around the same, so all in, we just haven't found that somebody else can do it cheaper. Sure, if somebody came in and said, hey, we can save you thirty percent and they could legitimately do it, we'd be interested in it, just hasn't happened yet. That's our annual uh, fire department command vehicle, they replace one a year between the, it's the shift officer, the chief and the deputy chiefs and the fire replacement, uh, the fire inspection vehicle. So we've got all these vehicles on a regular schedule and the goal is every year to get us to the point where realistically, we have all the money in the base budget to do our regular fleet replacement. You can always kick some of these vehicles off, but then what happens? Your fleet gets older, you're paying more repair costs. Um, large vehicles will still come before capital outlay. Um, fire engines cost a million bucks a pop, those are always going to come before capital outlay. Some of the DPW equipment, a street sweeper, sewer vacuum truck, those are a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, those would still come before capital outlay, because they're not as regular of a replacement as our fleet. Liability insurance, we are insured just like anyone else. We insure um, all of our buildings, we insure all of our employees, all of our public officials. Uh, when we think about the hundred plus miles of road, all the water and sewer, all of the electrical lines, the twenty plus buildings. This building alone, the replacement value for the high school is probably three hundred million dollars. So um, each elementary school, if you had to replace one, God forbid if we completely lost one in, let's say, a meteor strike. Um, fifty million dollars to build a new elementary school. So this summer, when nobody's in any of the buildings, we'll uh, we'll plan that. Yeah, you're right, might not be the worst thing. Unfortunately, I've gone ten or twelve rounds with our insurance company, they know my game. So, you know, when you're trying to say, hey, somebody threw a rock through one of the schools, it's completely done, I'm returning to your school. They know not to call me on my uh, on my BS, but we'll keep trying. But again, this is all of our uh, combined liability insurance. Unemployment, I believe, is included in this budget as well. We are not a uh, we don't pay unemployment insurance. We are a direct pay for unemployment, most municipalities in the Commonwealth are. And the reason is we generally tend to be a little bit more stable than uh, the private sector and we have the option of not having to provide insurance. So we usually don't go through these great oscillations of hiring a whole lot of people and laying a whole lot of people off. So our unemployment costs are usually very low. Uh, you all, a couple of years ago, we, during the pandemic, we were going to lose the extended day program, those help students go to extended day. We actually took money out, continued to pay everyone for a couple of reasons. One, we felt it was the right thing to do, we didn't know why we were losing a job during the pandemic. And two, if we hadn't spent that hundred and forty thousand dollars, we've ended up probably spending seventy thousand dollars in unemployment costs. And had no one back in September, the program ended up running in. So they generally run uh, relatively low, also given that the state never really lets you challenge unemployment. Um, that's neither here nor there, but it's unemployment for the state. And only this is just relevant to the general government budget. Uh, we have a reserve fund, it's just the, the school department is able within their fifty two million dollars to move money around as needed. General government budgets in Massachusetts are not, it's kind of a way you can do it through the warrant that sometimes do it, but the OR has never actually said. Yeah, that's great, you know, you can go ahead and do that, they always kind of look the other way and wait for you to get into trouble. So this is for unforeseen and emergency expenses. So the best example I give, something's broken and we need to fix it and it's not something you can reasonably budget for. And it's larger generally than that budget's operating budget can handle, or you're getting closer to the end of the year. I always pick up a town clerk as an example, she has a very small office budget, it's a four-person operation. Best town clerk's office in the Commonwealth, it's out of the country. But if Mary Lou had a piece of equipment that broke that was twenty five hundred dollars, her office budget isn't going to be able to accommodate that. It's, it's a ten, twenty thousand dollar budget at most. So a voting machine breaks or something during the year, they're never going to have that in their budget to be able to do that. All right, any questions before I move on to facilities? All right, we're going to move on to facilities. Paul Ricard could not be here uh, tonight, he already attended one meeting and has a couple of other meetings this week. And Chris Foley, the assistant director, is actually on vacation this week. Because the facilities department can't take vacations during school vacations, um, that is actually some of their busiest times, is the February, April vacation. Anyone who was here last week, or I think it was two weeks ago, you know, the room was a little too warm. Uh, they have scheduled a repair to the HVAC system over April vacation. So Chris and the team and Paul had to work to make sure we were able to get it done. Example of a job that they probably saved the town about twenty thousand dollars on by being able to do it in-house. We created our townwide facilities department in fiscal twenty and ensures all town buildings and grounds are maintained with the highest standards and best practices, fine with both the public and private sector. We created a facilities department. We tried a couple of times before to have a single facilities department, some towns do it, some towns don't. Probably been one of the best things we've done recently. We said it would be about six months in and then we'd say, how did we ever do this before? I think it was about six hours in before we said, how did we ever not do this before? And as it says here, services provided include structural, electrical, plumbing, painting, venting, signage, preventative maintenance. We've done a little last couple of years, we've moved most of our townwide systems to preventative maintenance systems. What we actually did in the past is we had a school facility department that was fairly small, you had a director, office staff and a couple of tradesmen. And the town had um, really nothing, we mostly did contracted services. We sort of combined everything together, built it out the way we needed it to have the staff that we needed. And we now have tradesmen, we have an electrician, we have a plumber, we have a carpenter and you have some sub-trades within that. We did a realignment of our grounds work and we took two groundsmen that had been doing work at schools, groundskeepers, made them um, a licensed craftsman. So they're just assisting the craftsmen, so the plumber and the electrician. And DPW took over some of the um, mowing maintenance, mowing and maintenance responsibilities for the school buildings. But if you look at here, all the facilities, and I love this picture here that kind of gives me the breadth of everything that they're responsible for maintaining. Again, on the school side alone, we probably have seven hundred million dollars worth of buildings. On the town side, buildings similar to a school, you know, the public safety building would probably be thirty or forty million dollars to replace. Um, if we had to do it today, town hall is priceless. Uh, some of our other facilities are, again, what is a DPW building worth? On the one hand, it's worth nothing, on the one hand, we can't operate without it. But they maintain all the facilities that you see here, all the interior and exterior work, they're taking on a lot of the project management. So a lot of the smaller projects in particular, where we're seeing dollar savings and we're seeing efficiencies because the facilities department can GC some of those projects on their own. Even when we have to hire a project manager, which we're required to do beyond a certain uh, dollar level, the facilities department is able to manage that project. Whereas before, it was, you know, might be Kathy Carney from purchasing, might be the town manager, it might be that department head. Um, we'd had the PBCC in the past, but one of the challenges, which is our um, public building construction committee, a lot of town, permanent building construction committee. A lot of towns have some version of that. The challenge is we haven't really built a lot of buildings in the last ten or fifteen years, we've done a lot of repairs. Um, and schools, and we're doing the middle school, obviously it's a whole separate statutory framework for how you go about building a school building. But we haven't built the town hall since nineteen twenty eight. The DPW building was, I think, twenty fifteen, uh, the library has not been built in a long time. Um, so most of our buildings are where they are, they aren't really going to change. Just a couple of projects to highlight what some of the work at facilities has done. They completed a conversion of all buildings to LED technology and adding lighting control where it was appropriate. This was done largely in-house, so sometimes the way we approach the projects, we might provide the labor, we obviously buy the services. Sometimes we use some contracted services and then sometimes we use our staff. The facilities department has this great sort of surge capacity that when they have a project, they kind of bring all the tradesmen and craftsmen to bear. And we could also draw on our facilities folks, our custodians that you see that maintain the building so well as needed to get some of these projects done. And you can see some examples here from, I think this is the Willett. High school field project, if you go look out at that field, there's a big beautiful field there with big, beautiful bright lights that don't shine to any of the neighbors' houses. Um, facilities oversaw that project and that's a great example of a project that because of the way we structured it, they're able to oversee. Um, the project came in under budget, I think it's going to turn back probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the lighting has been permanent, we updated, updated the track and the field and now we have a great track and field with lights. And you can see some of the images there. See the water towers, they'll be getting done soon, in four or five years. Fire department kitchen, this is probably one of the best projects that facilities took on, I'm getting ready for the kitchen, because that's what everyone wants to see. We originally pegged around a four, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation to what is effectively a commercial kitchen at the fire department. Facilities brought it in for about half that. They did a lot of the demo themselves, they did all the GC work themselves, they went out and found the vendors, got the uh, products that we needed. And coordinated all the vendors and did as much of the work as they could do, we had to still bring enough floor, got to do the floor and a couple of other things. But we now have a beautiful, modern kitchen for the fire department that um, came in at about half the cost because the uh, facilities department was able to GC and oversee this project. Couple of future projects that facilities has. Feasibility study for our animal shelter. Uh, the animal shelter doesn't have a permanent bathroom in it, it just has a whore body, it's really just an old brick building, but I think was actually part of the uh, old water treatment facility. Um, so there's a study going on about what do we want to do? Sometimes we get the question, well, it seems like town just studies stuff all the time. The real process to go over a project is you first do sort of feasibility, then design and construction. We used to sort of just ask for money and try to design and build it all at once. But you really want to start with that feasibility study to understand what you're doing and why you're trying to do it before you go expend a certain amount of money. It may seem simple, it's just an animal shelter, but we have uh, certain public construction laws that we have to follow, we have to pay prevailing wage. Obviously not that any business would ever not build something to code, but a municipal government is always going to have to build things to code. And it sounds simple, but to just add a bathroom onto a building becomes incredibly cost prohibitive. And if you add a building onto a ninety year old shed, what do you do? So we're starting with looking at what possibility can we actually do? We don't need to build the biggest shelter in the world, but on the other hand, it's not as simple as just sticking a shed there and uh, putting some lights on it. Some step repairs, brickwork and lintels around the vaulch. Again, an example of a, just a routine maintenance project, town meeting approved it this past year, but facilities is able to really GC that and really focus on it. Sometimes putting something like this out to bid without an in-house Sometimes putting something like this out to bid without an in-house department, you end up getting hosed because you're paying somebody else to do the design, you're paying somebody else to oversee it. And the project can really get away. Facilities maintains the buildings, they know what the challenges are, they know what they need to do and they're able to bring it in at a better cost than you could otherwise get. High school gym floor, they're supposed to be done about every 10 years. Money was appropriated to do it at about 12 years, which is good. Again, facilities can coordinate this whole project. From a management perspective, we have a department that can coordinate start to finish. They can talk to building managers about, hey, the building needs to be closed on such and such a day. This is what we're doing. They oversee all the custodians in the buildings. So they're able to work with them to make a project that this happens. Instead of having, you know, Dr. Thompson and I at a meeting, we're saying, okay, why are people coming in? And what are the contractors going? We have a facilities department that can handle this. You can do it better than even Dave and I could. Parking lot of the Oldham. I, incidentally, when I was out in Western Mass, I was at a meeting with some regional superintendents and we were talking about a shared transportation planner position or something because they were all fighting over their bus schedules. And I said to a couple of them, do people really become superintendents just to figure out bus schedules? And James wanted to part with the superintendent, or Adam's pounded his fist on the desk and said, I became superintendent just to decide the bus schedule. So this project is a parking lot replacement of the Oldham. As you can see from some of the cracks in some of the fading that's going on and the numerous repairs and the little parking, a little football field in between the parking lot here. The lot is dated, it's sort of damaged, it's in rough shape, there's some drainage issues. It probably hasn't completely been done since the building was actually installed in the 60s. Interestingly enough, and I know I told a lot of people this, David's already said three or four times, when we built the Oldham, we paid cash for it. 750 grand cash for the building. What the town was doing, sitting on that much cash in the 60s, I don't want to know, but we probably won't, yeah. We probably won't have the $50 million to build it in cash for an elementary school. We started these parking lot projects a couple of years ago with the downtown lots and most of them were done. And you can get a good 40 or 50 years out of a parking lot. We're at about that with the, with the Oldham. As we do them, those drainage improvements that happen, there's curbing that happens to make sure that the water is going where it's supposed to be. And to the extent practical, we're building in the underground infrastructure for eventually having charging stations in some of these lots. Even just putting in the pipe now saves you a fortune and you don't have to cut the lot up. We also look at water, sewer and any gas work that needs to get done once we have it. We're hopeful these will all get done this summer. And I think it's going to be, not that we did it for aesthetics, but it's going to be a huge aesthetic improvement for both the Oldham and the Willet. Which you can also, public safety of substance, the Willet first. The Willet, you can also see, I mean, there's no grounding there, the earth in the parking lot just kind of go together. There's parts of this parking lot that are more patched than original parking lot. So both of those lots are getting done. We're also doing the public safety lot, which is only about 20 years old. But for some reason, I don't know if anyone's got a relative that was building parking lots in the 60s, but there was something they were doing back then that just lost, has been lost in translation since because they've lasted longer than what is a, only about a 20-year-old parking lot. But as you can see from some of the numerous patches that we've had to make, the building has some drainage issues. It is in a wet area and the parking lot is causing, it's just been patched and sealed coated about as much as we can do. So it's time to write down, put a new coat, set it for the next 20 years. We've been in the public safety building for 20 or 21, was it 2002, Ann? 2002 for the public safety building?
Couple of years, oh, a couple of years later, I think. Probably around '04 or so.
So we're almost at 20 years for the public safety building. We're probably going to need to run it for at least another 20 years. And then see where we're going from there. Challenge with public safety buildings being you can't always build them bigger than you need, but then all of a sudden when you need an extra bay, the idea of adding one bay on a building becomes unacceptable possible. One important project town meeting approved this year is a townwide roof feasibility study. So we're starting to look at our building systems as a whole. You can think of it as a strategic plan for buildings, but it's really, hey, we know that roofs are a key system of all of our buildings. Most of the school roofs we've done a while ago are in good shape. Town buildings are sort of all over the place, but then again, sometimes you have a roof that's 40 years old and in great shape. Sometimes you have a 10-year-old roof that ends up not working. But this is one of the first examples of us really looking at our building system components totally and then figuring out what do we do? And from there, we'll be able to plan it. And over time, we'd like to build some of that into, to the extent practical, the facilities budget. We started with smaller items, fencing. We know that at some point in time, we own X feet of fence in town. We need to be replacing a certain amount. We start building that into the budget. Roofs are going to get the same way. The overall total facilities budget, as you see here, up $372,000. You subtract the utility increases, the budget's only up about 1.75%. We're seeing the inflationary cost increases you're seeing throughout the country. Facilities is starting to see, and it is starting to have an impact on the facilities budget. But they're otherwise doing a good job of trying to keep things as level as they can, where they can. But we specifically developed this department and put it together to maintain our buildings in better shape than we were and to make sure we were making the required investment to keep all of our buildings in their existing condition. So that way, when we get to the point where we have to replace a building, it's, we've done what we can do. The building is in the okay shape that it can be. It's time for the building to go, rather than having the building fall apart and then ending up just spending money somewhere else. One of the things we wanted to stop doing, we've largely stopped doing, is we don't have to go to town meeting in the middle of the year and say, hey, there was a big problem at the vault and we need $200,000 to fix it. And show up at capital outlay and say, we had no idea we needed new windows on the side of the building. Let's fix it. So it's just being a little bit more proactive. I know that sounds like it's common sense, but there's really only about a dozen towns in the Commonwealth that have a complete shared facilities department that take the same approach. And that's it for facilities. Any questions on the facilities budget? Do you have questions online? No? All right, well, thank you, everyone. We covered the school department budget tonight. We covered our shared costs and our facilities. Any questions on any of those budget areas? All right, well, I want to thank you all for being here and thank you for those of you who joined us online. We'll see you back here Wednesday night where we will cover all of the town's operating budget. So that's where you get to see the police budget, the fire budget, town hall and public works. And then Thursday night, we'll be going over the special town meeting warrant. And I believe that'll be headed by chairman of the board, Matt Plank and Bill Fassbell. Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Good job, manager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try. So I'm sorry, you're talking about the master plan. So you have all your sub-areas of the master plan and that's supposed to be this is the direction. We just knew we had to do zoning.